Well, actually, we have an assessor meeting first, but let's say the question is, we're all standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get your racket, Dan, sorry. So, uh, where's the... Oh. There we go. It's time. Start of the open the assessor's meeting.
Three days early.
I know.
Okay, so here are...
Well, look at that, yeah, nineteen.
Yeah, let's fix that date.
Oh, okay. Thanks, John.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen. Happy for you, everybody have an agenda? Okay. Pretty straightforward tonight. These are pretty much ministerial corrections to some paperwork. And it can align with statutory requirements. In particular, the Wicklow abatement and supplements. Those were due to a dating error on my part. And so we've got reverse things back to the fifty. First one was an error. That's a red... Those are relevant to the Red House in the assessing numbers on those. The supplement twenty-one sixty-two is an omission, probably an error. And that's pretty much all I can tell you about it. Mathematical errors, computational. The twenty-two thirteen Archer debt. I had put this assessment, I had joined it with another property that he owns at his request. Subsequent to that, he requested that it be put back as had the tax bill sent for him. It's an interesting case in that this little segment has assessed here, he owns in undivided interest, one portion required or three or four other people. So he wanted to make sure he's got his tax bills to show that he had paid his portion. So I accommodated him and just did a name of new separate taxes. And Mr. Berry, that was just, he finally got enough of that house down there on the south of Beck Road. South, you know, for me to assess. It's not completed yet, but I got a good fortune of it done. Any questions on any of these?
So do you need to vote to sign these collectively? Do you want to have a motion to agree to the abatement and supplements?
Here are the signature signatures, if you wouldn't mind.
So, um... Motion to accept the abatements and supplements?
Uh, maybe.
This is meeting January twenty-second.
Nineteen.
Ah, you did that when I was there.
Who seconded?
I did.
All in favor?
I just want to announce, make an announcement. I had my cataract surgery, so everybody should be aware their assessor's agent's vision has sharply improved.
So does that mean there won't be any more date errors?
That's right.
No, it means he can see what you build now on your property.
I don't have to get...
It's coming soon.
I don't have to get as close. See it now.
Less chances of getting shot. No more excuses.
I gotta tell you, that cataract surgery is a miracle. Huh? Yep.
How long did you have them before you needed surgery? How long did you have them before you needed surgery?
Oh, they creeped up, I didn't realize it. Probably, I would say probably a period of four years. And then one day I walked in and it's like everything looked like it was brownish, you know?
We're not, Jim, we're not sure what that is.
Oh, this is the list. The supplemental tax list, you have to sign this page.
Okay, but it said something, was that on the agenda?
Yes, it is. The three supplements are right here.
Okay, yes.
And these add up to total, it's a warrant.
Oh, okay.
It's a warrant to collect the total.
Oh, with the warrant to collect.
The total, five fifty-seven oh seven.
Glad we asked, because he didn't know. Okay, we're gonna sign it. So once they were the actual... So we got one more, is it?
Could be.
I gotta add in the three twenty-four forty-seven. I had one made out for the right amount.
Okay, well, just put the right amount on and we'll sign that.
Okay.
You need a capital right?
I can correct it.
Okay.
Nobody changed the year.
It's the wrong year, too?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's twenty-two.
It's twenty-twenty-one.
I just assumed we were all taking care of it before I got here.
No, the date for today that you had twenty-two, you have it as twenty-twenty-one.
Maybe that's why we had January twenty-two, because it is. It'll be in the next column. All right, so then sign that. Are you done?
Just a second. I know I made that one of these.
Scalter sixteen fifty. Down, ask the truck myself. Oh, how the wind was wicked, did anybody even...
Okay, so the total was eight eighty-one, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
That looks closer.
We made money on this one. We recaptured money.
All right.
Okay, so we're gonna close the assessor meeting and open up this select board meeting. Need a moment to sign.
Sorry about the date errors, guys.
Thank you, Jim. It's unbyted, we call it.
Thank you, as always, please drive home carefully, it's a little dicey out there.
Yes, I'm ready to keep the car too off the road.
If the select board meeting is open, can I make a motion to sign the warrants?
Yes, you can. Second. All in favor?
And while that Jane Heineck talk is being written out over there, motion to approve the minutes of January, was it the fifth, and was it twenty-twenty-one? Or was it January fifth, twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-two. Minutes of twenty-twenty-two.
With, make a motion to sign the minutes of January fifth, twenty-twenty-two with correction.
All in favor?
You are, you have had your coffee.
I mean, with that stuff they all bring in. The high-tech stuff.
I love the Red Bull.
Oh, God. I can't either, wicked. But if it works, it can be people with whatever. All right, no old business. So, we did receive two bids for the State Harbor project. And one from Propp Marine, twenty-four million, three hundred thousand. And the other from Sargent, Reed and Reed, forty-one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand. So both of those bids are over our budget. And I will reach out to Senator Collins and Senator King and see what they can do about getting us more money.
What was the name of the second one?
Sargent, but they...
Sergeant?
Sergeant, like Sergeant, on the, you know, Sergeant, they do all the roads.
Sergeant Corporation.
Sergeant Corporation, and they coupled with Reed and Reed.
What's the figures again, Propp Marine?
Twenty-four million, three hundred thousand. And Sergeant slash Reed and Reed is forty-one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
And as a reminder to our audience, our bid needs to be, what do we have?
The money we have now for the construction and the rest of the engineering is eighteen million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thou... Twenty-four million, three hundred thousand. So we started with nineteen million, six hundred and fifty, but eight hundred and fifty of it was going to permitting. But we haven't spent any of that yet. That's just what we would have to spend if we went forward. So we'll see if we can find another three, four, I guess it would be about six million more dollars. And if that's, Washington has six more million dollars for us, we can build it. We'll see what we can do. It's been a long time, been two and a half years since they gave us the grant. So construction costs have gone way up and I can see why it went up, but where's where we are. They spent, both of these bidders spent a long time doing, well, the... This is just their bid, but there's like two hundred and fifty pages of work that they both, that they both have put into the project. So we'll see what we can do about finding a little more money.
Is there any chance of scaling back the project?
I think those are two options, more money or scaling back the project, both of which will have to be run by the federal government. What can we scale back? And I guess we'd have to ask, like, I assume the lower bidder, what can you do for the amount of money that we do have? With permission from the federal government.
Is there anything necessary on a motion of this, or we're all good?
Um, we're not accepting, well, can't accept these yet, so... Do you want to go ahead and see if we can get even more money or if we use the scope? Do you want to know? That's fine, I'll take the motion from someone else.
Motion that we allow Carol to go ahead and grab some more money from the federal government.
Or...
Or we use the scope.
You got six million.
I don't even want to look at that ever, because I know you'll get the money.
You said the first time, Jason.
You have a successful, you have a successful reputation.
Well, we'll see.
Well, you could argue the points and, you know, you could probably...
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Thanks.
No.
Well, you have to...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, of course we do.
Have you abstained?
No.
It's four, four...
Yes. Sure, I'm not gonna say I'm not gonna go get my money.
Really, absolutely, you're gonna ask anyway.
Gotta ask. That was the proposal in the first place, if you don't ask, you don't get it, right?
Absolutely.
Anyway, going forward, state property tax deferral program. What is that?
I'm gonna bring Suzette on board for this, Mr. Treasurer, tax collector.
No, I don't, I'm not getting... General assistants, registrar of voters, what else, let's see.
The state recently rolled out a property tax deferral program to help taxpayers. It's some qualifications, you have to be sixty-five, low income. The applications are on our website, if anybody is interested. They ask me, you know, they want your air, your income. You can come up here, we can give you an application also, if you have any, need any assistance, we can, I can help with that. So that's something to help anybody who's definitely interested in it.
What's the recent date?
That's state agency? State of Maine ago, I can tell you.
Yeah, it has a purpose to help senior citizens stay in their homes when they don't have the income to meet the burden of the homeless.
Yeah.
But they, but the taxes are paid on the sale of property when they pass.
Like if they, yeah, if they sell the property, you have to, how it goes is state main will pay the towns your property tax.
Settle with the family at the end or whatever.
At the end, yeah, but when you sell it, you know, move on.
Pass away.
Pass away, your state, or, you know, your family can just pay him off and it's, you know, yours again.
Sixty-five and older, right? Or you have to permanently disable.
Yes, it's sixty-five years or older or documented disability that makes the individual going forward. They must be filled with the file, not filled, filed with the useful assessor between January first and April first. Once it's filled out and you qualify, you don't have to do anything.
You also have to have less than forty thousand dollars in common, less than liquid assets, less than thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'd say it's mostly for...
So you can't have other property that you own, you have to have one property that you're living in. So there's a lot, just about, you know...
And they will cover, and there are also like mobile homes, there's the one in the home, like a mobile home, no land. That's also in there.
So you're still gonna stay on for this tax abatement rescinding, right, Suzette?
Yeah. Kind of going back to Jim's pre-meeting.
Before you sit down, have you got six million dollars?
Do you want a check or cash? I'm here to report the road conditions from Bucksport to Ellsworth are horrible, they're white out. And there's an accident on one eighty-nine.
Someone went off the road?
Yeah, two, a red truck and a black car, that's as much as I know.
Well, just to recap, State Harbor came in, the lowest bid was twenty-four million, three hundred thousand, six thousand shive, six million shive. Right, I so much had trouble speaking the word million, million, million. I guess you don't have more trouble with billions, billions.
Trillion.
Yeah, how about billion?
Yeah, for sure.
Glad now we're gonna try to get some more money, that's how we need it for six million.
I'm sure. If I had it, it'd be yours.
I know. So, okay, sorry, tax abatement rescinding.
What you guys have in front of you, but two, for real estate account number twenty-one sixty-two. I was given an abatement and the amount was four hundred and four dollars and three cents.
Yep, we got it.
Looking at the account, there's been no tax committed. So I can't abate something that hasn't been committed.
I understand that needs...
An abatement is when...
Yeah, I understand that.
But if no tax has been committed on that property.
Oh.
No tax bill is due.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so make a motion to sign that, I'll make a motion to sign that rescinding, abatement, and both of them.
And then the other one, the original abatement amount was for three eighty-three fifty-eight, which is the amount of the tax. But there had been a payment made on the account of ninety-five seventy-six by the previous owner. The correct abatement should have been two eighty-seven eighty-two, which would reflect the town's portions of that property.
What number's that?
That is number twelve fifty-six.
Okay. So that's the right rescinding amount now?
Yes, you had to rescind the three eighty-three fifty-eight, yeah, that would be living all these.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for that.
For both of them?
Sure, for both of them, for both of them.
Do I ever second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Really, thanks.
RFP broadband infrastructure. Can you send that out?
Good score.
Right now.
Okay. Your last page.
This is the last page of your packet, all righty.
Do you want to talk about it, Renee, do you want me to? We, to bring you up to date, as you know, we've been working on this broadband thing for quite some time. And we have now had a couple of people who stepped up to help. Namely, Mr. Small and also Mark Villette from Axiom has come with us. And they've both offered to do some things, you know, and Mark would like to have this, but we, because we're committed by town law, we're gonna put on the RFP out in paper and hope somebody, we get lots of bids to move forward. I won't go into too much detail about what the specific offers are, because we're not at that point.
This is not a, we're not looking to spend any money at this point, there's no money to spend. This is just to get a plan of what it would cost to do.
If potentially some of the infrastructure money comes specifically for that, is that...
Yes.
Well, yeah, and everybody looks for ARCA money, so, yeah.
Martha Kane as well, she's on the Economic Development Committee, do you have anything to add, Martha?
Only that I think what we have talked about was that it would, did I go in my chunks again? It would be in chunks, because first we need to do the planning stage, which is all this RFP is for. And have them look at getting fiber across Lubeck instead of just the company going on one road and another road and another road. So if we can get, if we can get some estimates for the whole of the community. And then we start talking about, do we use ARCA money for the next phase, do we go directly for the infrastructure money? Is there a bond necessary that we're gonna get paid back? But that's all way down the road.
Yeah, so you do have money to leave them to come up and measure and...
No, nothing to start with, it's a proposal and then...
They need to be pretty obvious, I mean, most RFPs do have money behind them. So I think you need to make it very clear that this is pro bono work. Well, it doesn't cost any, I mean... It costs... Did you pay for your proposals? They spent thousands of dollars doing it, and they knew, they knew that upfront, but... But they also, but they also spent the money knowing they could win the bid. And it could be free. There's no money behind it, I'm just saying that...
One other thing I'd like to mention in this proposal, which would set this apart from any other proposal, like from a bigger cable company or whatever, is that the town of Lubeck would own the network. That's not, we're not just putting it out there to put people, businesses to put the fiber along the roads, that the town of Lubeck in the end would own this network, so we may not, we might not get a whole lot of interest.
And right now, it may be who, whoever is going to do this, to do it for a very little money, knowing that down the road they'll get much more. So we have to take all of that...
You may get people to call and say, what's your budget for the, because like even with the sidewalks, there was seventy thousand dollars put aside just to plan the sidewalk, and they knew that.
So the nicer the plan, potentially the better future ideas they can get of an RFI.
Yeah.
How many homes are passing as opposed to Italy right now?
Yeah, and a lot of this is, you know, you're swimming in the dark, because you don't know how many people are gonna sign up for it, or if they want it, and it's very speculative. But given what's happened in Lubeck this past year, we would go ahead believing that Lubeck will continue to build. And as they said in the famous film Field of Dreams, you build it, they will come. So with that, we'll go forward.
And we didn't want to disqualify the company that has offered to do this plan
Yeah.
by doing that, and then having to put an RFP out, and he's already submitted all the numbers. That would disqualify that company, so we do the RFP now. No, we're trying to do this so that we're doing it right.
Yeah. The other thing is, people keep throwing out little companies that have got some kind of broadband going, right? Then they'll talk about, what is the Tesla, Musk?
Starlink.
Starlink. And we talked about that. And generally, what happens with these smaller companies is they're inconsistent, that they're, when everything's right and the, you know, planets are in alignment, you're having a nice day, it goes fine. But the minute, you know, you get a bad wind, or a storm, or a sunspot, it goes belly up. So we don't want that kind of thing.
We have wind, but...
A little wind, it gets a bit breezy, you may have noticed that recently.
So do you need a motion to put this out in the paper? All in favor of the motion from someone? I'll make a motion. All in favor? And it'll be quantitized. All right, so it looks like we have so much more points. Alex Henry, for associate member of the planning board.
Yes, the...
Alex Henry.
We've received a resignation...
Yes, I knew I knew you.
From Natalie, the associate member that we disappointed, that it was gonna be too much, it is a big undertaking. And so she suggests, yes, she suggested Alex, had him contact me, he is here, that's half the battle.
But is he here to change his mind? No, not yet.
Were you part of the Peruvian trip?
No, I stayed behind.
Oh.
And what would happen?
Your brother...
Your old one.
So we should have a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll make a motion, we accept Natalie's resignation.
Have a second? All in favor?
I'll make a...
That was a short stint with a planning board.
I'll make a motion that we accept Alex Henry.
We have to inside...
I'll second that. All in favor? You're on now.
Thank you. They owe you one.
Yes. So do they come to the meetings, they just can't impose unless there's not a forum, correct? Is that how that works?
He's gonna be the recorder as well. And where there's, some planning board are abroad or out of the area, they, the members at that moment can bring up the associate members.
Right. Do they have to vote on that each meeting?
Because the Harvard board, if there's like only four, there's gonna, you know, an alternate? So it's, so it's different than an alternate? Because an alternate just sits in the place of a member.
I think the board has to bring them up at every meeting, yes.
That's all I have.
Other bits, a public comment?
I have, I have one thing. In regards to the Baker House, it will, there's a contract to tear that house down. It will be coming down as soon as it's safe to do so. Any questions? Get in touch with me, and I will answer them for you.
Which Baker House?
Pleasant Street.
The one, you know, we call it the cat house? The brown one down, the brown one, Colancy.
Sort of behind the lobster, lobster, lobster.
The one with the man card from my red house up there, then he'll...
The one the guy was gonna tear down.
Oh, with the bandsard group.
Yeah, the guy was gonna tear it down.
He was gonna bury it, and he didn't bury it down.
Oh, yes, and she wants to put up a trailer there.
No, she doesn't want to put anything up there.
Good.
But, yeah, you know, we warned the guy who was gonna tear it down, but not...
That's right.
Yeah.
And walk away with stuff.
So anyway, it was tore down, I wanted everybody to know, so...
And I'll bet you're gonna do it, aren't you?
She's a nice old woman, she doesn't need the stress.
Just to remind the board that you voted in August to take a legal action, and that's where I'm in the middle of this.
And it just happened. What I want to know is, who's going to give a home to those countless rodents that are living in there?
I give the directions to your home down the other side of the hill.
Well, see, unlike what happened down the peacocks, there's actually a plan to get rid of them before the house is tore down.
Oh, that's not a bad idea.
So they all move into somebody else's.
Well, I remember the rat infestation.
I just said over the hill, and I believe the blue shutters. We're good.
Right, sighing down there.
Mario would love to see them.
Friend of mine walked out in the side yard and saw all kinds of movement, he turned on the light, he said it was covered with rats.
That was the year of the rats.
And if I may, before we adjourn, I'd like to say the town of Lubeck's had a rough couple weeks with some families and all. And certainly from the town and all, we'd love to send out our prayers, condolences, and thoughts to all of you out there. We're thinking of all of you. Well said. Well, who are you picking to drive home to the...
Didn't I just get here?
Missed it.
Your six million went real fast.
Yeah.
You were just here for the... Yes, that was a six million dollar...